Good evening. We're going to call the meeting of the Sanborn Regional School Board to order. Stand for the pledge, please. I guess right behind you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do I have action on the minutes for June 5th, 2024? Motion to approve? Any comment? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. All right, manifest documents are starting to go around. Nominations.
Thank you. I have a nomination for Pamela Casey for Special Education Secondary Assistant Director, Chris Casella, High School Social Studies, Maddie Hadwin, 6th Grade English, Connor Henry, High School English, Erin Jacobs, Special Education Teacher Memorial, Marissa Manarini, Special Education School Counselor, Erin Sherbin, School Nurse at BAKI, and Elizabeth Stackewicz, School Psychologist, Nina Wooding, BCBA, Brittany Gerusi, Era Educational Memorial, Lynn Anderson, Student Assistance Program Counselor, Middle School and High School, which is 50% grant-funded, Sydney Barinson, Life Science at the High School, Sophia Fowler, Out of District Coordinator and Teacher, and John Ryder, 6th Grade Science at the Middle School.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to move?
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Resignations.
So we have a Cassie Zakowski, Speech and Language Pathologist at the BAKI School, Amanda Feeney, Special Education at the Middle and High School, Bob Hatzmannola, School Counselor at the Middle and High School, Heidi Levitt, the Director of Counseling at the Middle and High School, Elizabeth Mulvey, Science Teacher, James Corso, Facilities and Grounds, William Flynn, Facilities and Grounds, and Frank Delmedico, School Counselor.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept with regrets.
Second. All in favor? Unanimous. Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. We've had a wonderful week with staff being back in the district. We have wanted to thank the board for purchasing the new machine that's helped us clean the floors. It's very important to note that we were down two custodians this summer, and being down two custodians, we were still able to clean almost every floor in the district with the new equipment that you purchased last year, so we wanted to thank you very much for that. Also wanted to just take a moment to thank all the parents that are here this evening to talk about this important issue that we're discussing. We have a policy called the JBAB policy, which is for transgender students. There's a very concerning part of that policy that I want to publicly address, which is parental notification. It's my belief and philosophy as a school superintendent that parents are, need to be involved at every level of their child's education. And as a result of the policy that was adopted prior to my appointment as superintendent, I brought the policy to the board because I don't agree with the parental, the lack of parental notification in policy. And so I want everyone here to understand that the purpose of bringing the policy forward is to address the problems with the parental notification component. We welcome your comments this evening, and I want you to know that the format for the board meeting will be that we will listen to your comments, and then we will have a recess for the board to talk to our attorney, and then the board will come back to deliberate. I also wanted to share that next week I'll give a more detailed update about the opening of school, our academic performance scores, which have improved quite a bit over the last year, and important curriculum and strategic plan updates and our NEASC process, which will be finishing up in November. So thank you very much to everyone who's here, and we have a great meeting tonight.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have any subcommittee reports tonight?
A quick little
Great.
update. On Monday, the SST Governing Board met. That was my first meeting. It was sort of a kickoff meeting for the school year. They talked about some budget and sounded like they did have a little bit of declining enrollment at SST. The other big thing that was talked about was there had been talk of trying to get electrical program at SST. Excuse me, but the the Superintendent of Exeter didn't think it was going to be feasible for this year, so it's, they're not moving forward with it for this year. And the next meeting is October 7.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, our student council representative is not in attendance tonight, so we will move to first public comment. But before I welcome people up to the microphone, I just want to reiterate, because we have a lot of new faces here tonight, I just want to reiterate our policy on public comment. So 30 minutes will be set aside for citizens to address the board, 1 15-minute period prior to new business and 1 15-minute period at the conclusion of new business. This period may be extended by a majority vote of the board. Speakers will be allotted 3 minutes per person. Residents of Newton, Kingston, Fremont, parents of currently enrolled students, and Sanborn Regional School District staff may offer comments on current school district matters only. The board will not entertain comments on items that do not pertain to current school district matters. Requests addressed the board on matters that do not pertain to current school district matters must be presented to the superintendent and must set forth the specifics of the subject to be addressed. When appropriate, the board may place such requests on the agenda. So, if anyone would like to speak, come up. I will set my handy-dandy little timer here for 10 minutes.
I, I, I timed myself at home, Dawn. I just went.
I have no doubt that you did.
Okay. Kelly Cullavan, Newton, New Hampshire. I would like to start my statement with some basic definitions from the Merriam-Webster Dictionary. "Inclusive: to include everyone, allowing and accommodating people who have historically been excluded because of their race, gender, sexuality, or ability." "Tolerance: the ability or willingness to tolerate something, in particular, the existence of opinions or behavior that one does not necessarily agree with." "Discrimination: the unjust or prejudicial treatment of different categories of people based on grounds of beliefs, ethnicity, religion, age, sex, or disability." "Human rights: fundamental rights and freedoms that people are entitled to regardless of their background, location, beliefs, or other status. These rights are based on shared values such as equality, respect, and dignity." "Respect: regard for the feelings, wishes, rights, or traditions of others." Nowhere in any of these definitions does it state that one person's opinions or beliefs must be accepted or supersede their own. Nowhere does it state that if you disagree with someone's views and/or opinions, that that disagreeing party is phobic, uneducated, or discriminatory. And lastly, nowhere in these definitions does it state that just because someone has a differing opinion than yours, that their opinion is unjust or inaccurate. In the United States, we are blessed to have the freedom to believe what we choose. But that freedom to believe absolutely does not give anyone the right to force their beliefs upon others. Inclusivity, tolerance, discrimination, respect, and human rights is not, cannot, and does not only apply to one side, regardless of what you believe. Every single student at Sanborn should feel safe, respected, and comfortable while being educated. We, as a community, must find some common ground in order to provide that environment to all of our children despite our differences. That means respecting the needs and rights of our LGBTQ+ community, but also our traditionalist community. Accommodating the rights of some should never infringe on the rights of others, or vice versa. Name-calling and disrespect happens from both sides, and we need to work together as a community, and I hope that's the reason everyone is in attendance here tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I see you're starting the semester off with an easy policy to discuss. So eight years ago, I asked about overhauling this policy.
Pam, you just said your name and where you're from.
Pam Brown, Kingston resident. Eight years ago, I asked that we revisit this policy to restore parental rights. And I was, when I was first a school board member, so that was eight years ago, and I'm, it's nice to see us on the agenda tonight. This issue has, is seeing a firestorm of debate, the transgendered issues. Some view it as a social contagion, and others view it as a liberation movement. My concern with the current policy starts with page 2 at the bottom, Privacy, Confidentiality, and Official Records. It's, it basically states that the building principal has the authority to, as appropriate, make the call as to whether to inform parents if a student claims fear of abuse. However, RSA 169(c)(18) says only the New Hampshire courts determine the existence of neglect or abuse, not a principle. So I suggest you strike the section where it indicates the principal shall meet with the student and determine whether there is good cause for abuse. Replace that with, "The principal shall meet and provide information to the parents with an opportunity to discuss the matter." If you'd like to petition the courts with, and file a petition concerning abuse, the court's free to do that. The district's free to do that, but you can't cut the parents out of the process. On pages 2 and 3, physical ed, intramural sports. Again, there's the concern that if we have transgendered students in, there have been incidents of people being hurt when girls play with transgendered girls, and I suggest that we consider the possibility that girls may be harmed with students playing in these sports, and we should add language saying, "Parents have an opportunity to have their children off out of the activities." On page 3, restroom, locker room, changing rooms. It indicates any students uncomfortable using a sex segregated restroom will be given a single-ocan restroom or nurse's restroom. Now, what if we have dozens of students expressing such discomfort? Do we have facilities to accommodate all of them? Page 4 mandates that the school district follow NHIAA guidelines and Title IX policies. And as you know, there's a major legal battle underway concerning Title IX and whether it protects women's sports from trans participants, and that's in the courts. And lastly, remember years back when I fought the SEL, Social Emotional Learning, adding those non-academic traits to the district's mission statements? Ways such as tolerance and respect for our diversity. If you look at page 4 of the policy, it indicates that we, there's a mandate that we express kindness towards transgender students, but does not define kindness. Kindness might constitute indicating to the student, by a staffer or student, that the transgender student should seek professional therapy. Many of us consider that an act of kindness, especially in light of the fact that European nations, including the UK, are reversing course on these policies. Medical interventions and detransitioning lawsuits are now growing. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Bashaw. I'm a Kingston resident. I'm a father of three children in the district. I know I'm not a stranger to most here. I have written all the board members directly on my concerns of some of these policies, and I have posted some things on social media that many agree and many do not agree with. I'm no, I'm not shy to controversy. So I'm not going to rehash all those items that I placed in there. I do want to open up by saying one thing. I do believe in the freedom for trans people to exist and be safe. Contrary to popular belief, that is my, that is my feeling. I just don't believe that their emotional or psychological desires and needs and wants should allow them access to spaces that have been protected and separated by biological sex and does not offer them those opportunities just because they desire. I'm a 270-pound man. I do not belong in the locker room or the bathroom with anyone's daughter, wife, or any other biological woman. And and if tomorrow I decided to grow out my hair, which could be problematic, wear women's clothing, or augment my body in any way, there is nothing wrong with that, and I have a right to do that. But I still do not belong in a locker room, bathroom, or sporting event with biological females. That is just the way I feel. As far as preferred pronoun usage, I understand if people wanted to support me in that decision and they wanted to use my preferred, my preferred pronouns, they could support me in that endeavor and move it forward. However, I have no right as others to participate in that and call me by those preferred pronouns, especially if it is contrary to what we all know is, what many of us believe is fact through human anatomy and biology. Lastly, I would just say, I know a lot of times organizations are crippled by the fear of litigation and liability. The adults of the world haven't figured out this situation yet. We're fighting it at the US Supreme Court level. There's all sorts of debates on topics on it. I think the school's best policy at this point would be to play the role of Sweden. I think the current policy as it sits is problematic because it strips away parental rights, and we do not care what government, no matter what they say. And I think the, the board should vote to suspend the current policy as it sits and not take up any additional changes at this time and move it forward. Let the rest of the world kind of figure this out. Let kids be kids before we thrust all these problems and force them, our students just be kids. Thank you.
Good evening. Joe Primo, Kingston resident, father of a current Sanborn student. First thing I want to say, I want to thank this board. This is a hard topic. Everyone knows. You have a crowd. You never get a crowd. I'm never here, right? We know this. This board and your predecessors have done great work in the past and tough things. 2020, when I met some of you on Zoom for the first time, and you had to listen to us, this board did the right things many times. You've listened to the parents. You've listened to the community. We don't have to listen to counsel. I don't care what a counsel says. We're parents. To what Mr. Bashaw just said, we're going to get sued, we get sued. The last thing we have to do is cater to counsel. We're going to do what we want to do. I want you to think of that. We could do everything right and still get sued. Can't chase that, so let's do what's right. School boards have always had issues. I grew up in mass. When I was in elementary school, we had to deal with HIV and AIDS because we had a student with that. Talking to my parents of what they went through then of having to educate kids about blood and how that transmitted in the early 80s. Many of you are my same age. It was a difficult time. School boards have tough things. This is one. As to this particular policy, I'd never seen it. Most parents here probably never know it existed. What do we have it for? The first line, "New Hampshire Law Policy District to extend equal and fair treatment to all students in all aspects of the district's affairs." Says it all. There's no policy needed. Every other thing that's in here is covered except for bathroom use that I read through in harassment, in safe spaces, people using the correct bathroom. Why do we even have this policy? Let's eliminate the whole thing. Everything is covered. I would say with the exception of maybe the sports. In high school, I had a wrestling girl. It was the worst experience, and we can all laugh at it now. And Title IX applied. If you didn't have a sport, girls got to entertain. Could tell you it was one of the roughest things. I won. Heaven forbid I had lost, but I went around for a week. I beat up on a girl. Listen, that's not even the same as what we're talking about here where you could physically get somebody hurt. We need to really pay attention to this. I understand. I don't care about the NHIAA. They're not in our district. This is what we want. I don't care what counsel, I don't care what anyone else says. These parents here, taxpayers of this town, we matter. Nobody else. I hope you guys can look at that, but the last thing I'll make here, because I have 45 seconds. What Pam said, the fact of cutting out parents out of any decision, I don't know whose principles anymore. If they're any, I'm sorry. They do not have the right, nor should we make them have to make that call. Parents need to be informed. This is why Florida changed the law. They unfortunately had a child that went through this exact scenario laid out in here. Parents weren't informed, and it had a very bad outcome. And the last thing for parents, there are two names you probably don't know, James and Jennifer Crumley. Unfortunately, slightly different scenario, but those parents are sitting in jail for acts of their students, for their child who is in a school district. Do not cut parents out in any way, shape, or form. Let law enforcement do that. Report as you need to. Thank you.
All right, if there's no further comment, as oh, sorry. I obviously didn't prepare anything.
Of course not, because I guess I just am a little confused and a little behind. Don't we have gender-neutral bathrooms? Or if not, shouldn't we? Everyone should be safe. I don't care who or what you are and go where you want, but there should be a safe space for all children. Parents should be included in everything, not just this topic. When there's trouble in school, whether it's behavioral issues, no matter what it is, parents should be involved and informed. And I just think we should all be respectful of that, and parents, parents also should come up and talk to you on other matters as well, and in all the principles. So I think as a community, we all just need to do better and be involved. That's all.
Oh, one more thing. How about like co-ed volleyball and stuff, some of that action?
Where's Bob with the added sports?
I think that policy's on the next week.
All right. If there are no further comments, as the superintendent stated before, we are going to meet with, we'll call into a non, or is it a non-meeting? I don't know. Jim, how does that work?
Recession.
We'll take a recess. We will meet with legal counsel, and then we will come back into public session to
Can you give everybody an estimate? So, you know, so they
What do we, what do we say, like 15, do we think 15 minutes?
That sounds fine.
Maybe? Think, all right, so we're going to take a quick 15-minute recess, so we can speak with legal counsel, and then we will come back and we will discuss JBAB.
Where are we adjourned to?
Should we adjourn to?
We could go into the other
Okay. Yeah, so we will just go, we're going to go into the other room, and we will come back out in about 15 minutes, hopefully less. We are back from our short recess. We have taken everyone's feedback. We've spoken with legal counsel. And at this point, I'm open to accept a motion from the board.
Yep. I will make a motion to repeal the current JBAB policy.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Okay. I just, yeah, I mean, I mean, this motion sort of comes from, you know, we, we hear you. You're valued community members, and we're excited, incredibly excited that this many people came out here tonight. We would love to see you in the future as well for many, many important issues that we discuss at school board meetings. But your, your perspective is incredibly valued. We spoke to our legal counsel, and, you know, in reflecting on our commitment to ensure, as many of you have said, to ensure that we have a learning environment that is safe for all students, where all students feel comfortable. We feel that the current policy is, is not needed at this time. We also want to make sure, as many of you also discussed, we want to give time for the world to move forward with a little bit more definitive and more concrete understanding of this issue and how it affects different things at, at the school level. Right? So we think that this policy isn't something we currently need, and we'll be all right without it.
I think the one thing we discussed, I think that we all agreed on is that we have full confidence in the superintendent and the staff to keep the students safe. You know, I'll just piggyback on, on what Micah said. It is great to have everybody here tonight. We don't get, typically, there's, you know, five chairs and they're all empty. There are, not that this is an important subject, but for me, there's, there's other important topics such as curriculum and budgets that we would love your input on. I believe Pam said, Pam Brown, you know, eight years ago, she requested this. None of the board members that are sitting here today were on the board eight years ago. It was a different board. This board is here to listen. This board is here to capture value-added advice and your opinions. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming.
Yeah, so I will echo what the two gentlemen said before me, which is, we do appreciate everyone that showed up tonight. Everyone here has busy schedules. We have kids moving in different directions, and it's really great to see for such a, for such an important topic, people turn out, speak up, share your hearts, and, and you all did it in a respectful, articulate, quite frankly, a professional manner, and that goes far. And so thank you for doing that. Thank you for being willing to come out and stand up and have your voices be heard because it matters. And that's why we had the discussion that we had, and that's why we want to move in this direction of repealing this policy indefinitely. And for, for anyone who's wondering, there's layers of redundancy, and I know you're surprised about that in, in government, that there's layers of redundancy. But there's, there's already laws that protect, that protect all children in, in all different ways, and Title IX is just one of them. There's many RSAs, and we believe that those, those laws as they currently stand provide more than adequate protection for all students of Sanborn. And as Rick said, we are all confident in our administration and the administrative team that they will come together and make sure that those, those laws are enacted and that all children in this district are taken care of. And so that will, that will conclude my comments, but again, thank you for, thank you for being here. Thank you for voicing your concern, and thank you to my fellow board members.
Great. If there's no further comments, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone for coming out, and I wanted to affirm that regardless of what the policy is, the, the feeling of the administrative team moving forward in the future is that parental involvement is critical in all matters with our students. And so we continue to impart to the staff that should students bring up issues of gender, sexuality, or questions about themselves, or their health or well-being, that the parents will be involved. And, and that, that's, I, thank, thank you. I, I just want all of you to know that part of why I took the risk of putting this policy on the agenda before we started schools because I, like Dr. Brown, I, I wasn't here when Dr. Brown had to have this, wanted to have this policy discussed. It was before my time here, and about a year and a half ago, Mr. Fitzpatrick brought this policy to my attention with the explicit concern about the parental notification part. And so we kept watching court cases and legal matters that were moving forward, and we kept waiting to see kind of if the, the legislature would clear it up, and frankly, they kind of let us down. So I said this summer, I've had enough. I'm, I'm bringing this forward, and I'm going to talk to everyone about it. I know it'll be hard and heated, but I want everyone to know that why I brought this up is because I have a 16 and a 19-year-old boy, and if somebody did something with them at school that I didn't know about, you'd see a side of me I don't really like. So thank you very much for all being here, and I want you to know that the purpose of this difficult conversation was to make sure that parents know that we value them and that we will work collaboratively with them on all matters for our children.
If we could, if we could have the officers shut the doors, everybody's required to stay for the rest of the
Yeah, yeah. Good plug, Mary. More pizza. All right, so we'll move on to the super fun 7.1 approval of DOE 25 and MS 25.
Well, I get to follow that. Okay.
Yes, you did.
Too long, but so yes. DOE 25 is, as many of you know, is a financial statement of the school, school district, and it represents a balance sheet and the income statement for the school district. The DOE 25 and the MS 25 really provide the same information. I don't want to bore you with this, but when you complete the DOE 25, the MS 25 auto-fills. So it's the exact same information, so I'm just going to talk about the DOE 25 briefly. With respect to the DOE 25, I think you all have it open.
Yep.
If you go to page 2, which don't count the cover sheet, the top of page 2, there's the unassigned the top of page two, there's the unassigned fund balance. That's the, that's what's getting returned to the taxpayers. That's what's going to help, you know, with our, reduce our tax rate for next year. And that number, which is at the top, again, the top page two will be one million, four hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred twenty dollars and fifty cents.
Hold on one second there, Matt. Did you say we're returning money to the taxpayer?
Yes, sir. Yes, we are.
Every, only the people that are still here.
Only the people over here get it.
Say that amount one more time. Say it again.
One million, four hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred twenty dollars and fifty cents.
Almost a million and a half dollars back to the taxpayer? That's unbelievable, Matt.
Yes, sir, but I can't take credit.
All right.
How much did we get back last year?
Six hundred eighty-one thousand. More than double this.
So double? Almost double? More than double? Wow.
All right. Let's move on.
Same show host.
Going once, going twice.
The second, again, this is a twenty-six page spreadsheet with multiple tabs. It's a massive document. I did not complete it entirely on my own. Mr. Angel, our predecessor, helped me out with it, just to give him some credit. But the second most important grouping of numbers is on the last page, page number twenty-six. And that's the cost per pupil for elementary, middle and high schools. So for the board members, if you go down to that last page, you'll see what are the calculus, calculations are for our cost per pupil. That is kind of created by some crazy formula. If you want to learn more about it, you can go to the facility and finance agenda tonight. There's two links that I've linked to it, both provided by the DOE. One is like the DOE twenty-five one oh one, what it means. And the other one is how cost per pupil is calculated. And in their own words, it's a crazy formula and a lot of people don't agree with it. But we've been using it for decades in New Hampshire. So essentially what it is, is the cost per pupil is total expenditures, while subtracting some costs like food service, revenues, tuition, transportation costs, and you divide it by your average daily membership. So that's where we, where the state comes up with our cost per pupil. But at this point, you know, tonight, it's due on September first. We can file an extension, but it's done. No need to file an extension. I just need the board to make a motion to approve it as well as MS twenty-five. Because actually, earlier I forgot to mention, the DOE twenty-five goes to the Department of Education and the MS twenty-five goes to the Department of Revenue Administration. But yeah, I need the board tonight to approve it and sign them, sign both of them.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the DOE twenty-five and the MS twenty-five as written by the business administrator.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Great job, Matt. Thank you. And, and Matt Angel for the extra support.
From Alaska.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, thank you. All right.
Does that formula change over time? Has it been pretty static for, so you can look at year over year?
You can.
Yeah.
Problem is that the, I would be happy to explain that to you later because it's a lengthy process, but the problem that's not static is the student attendance. It's very complex. And so the numbers may not be apples to apples because of the way the student attendance is calculated. It's very complex.
But if, if you look at that link I provided on the facility and finance agenda, the DOE, the DOE twenty-five one oh one, it's from twenty twenty-two. So it's been pretty, you know, the process and what we report out, it twigs every year. They might add something, but it, it feels, it's similar year to year. Yeah.
All right. So policies, seven point two point one, J I C J, student use of privately owned electronic devices at school.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchinson?
Yes, his principal Mitch.
In the back, I see her.
She's on her phone. She's on her phone.
Always working, always working. So I just wanted to give a little update. And I know, I think it was June, at your board meeting in June, this came up for our first and second read. We were thinking of making some changes. Talked about it at policy. And there were some questions still kind of up in the air and some things that we knew were had, had to be figured. And so basically, as we started to really plan for the logistics, a few things came up that really had me questioning if this would really be the move to make six twelve. First of all, whether this really can be a blanket, six twelve, every kid puts their phone in a locker for the whole day. And I'll go into why. And then the second part was, you know, getting some data, having some time to look at the data I collected from staff at the end of the year, where they gave feedback that they felt the policy was pretty effective and that administrators were really good at dealing with it right away so that we were on the right track. So now I had this data all of a sudden and I got to having some talks with Tom and I said, can we kind of put a pause on the proposed revision? Because I, I want to try kind of a little bit more. We are going to adjust a few of what the, the pieces that we're currently doing with this policy, with the procedures around it. And I'll explain that in a minute. And again, I feel like we might have to think about something that might be a little different for each age level. So when I thought about the lockers, sounds great. Every kid has a locker. We have enough lockers in this building. And then I got talking with some middle school folks and they said, well, our middle school kids use the lockers like religiously. And it's also used almost as like an organizational tool, right? Where students will have all of their things in there, well organized and like, okay, time for math and you need to get your stuff for math. And they use it a lot as an executive functioning tool, a place for kids to keep their backpacks, keep their lunches until lunch, keep their sports stuff for after school. And I didn't want the locker to become the same place where they're supposed to not go because that's where their phone's supposed to be for the day. You know, unless they are escorted or whatever that procedure would have been. So that was a kind of a big problem in my mind of like, ooh, that's, yeah, we weren't really like thinking about the extent to which like the lockers are still a really big thing. And I wanted to give the staff some time to have a say in like, okay, if we don't have these lockers, what does that mean? And I didn't feel like we had enough time necessarily from like August twenty-first to the first day of school to really make sure that that was going to be super effective and like not be a, you know, disaster. The other part, so what I decided to do, I said, well, we can have a phone pocket in every single room, which we already implemented at the high school level. And the middle school teachers were happy to hear that and happy to hear that we were going to have a blanket procedure for, okay, kids aren't allowed on their phones. It's not at the discretion of the teacher, whether it's in a backpack or in the pocket, like every phone in every class is going to go in the pocket at the start of class and can be picked up at the end of class. They know kids aren't to take them in the halls when they go to the bathroom. And they, you know, can have some, some time with the phones. That's appropriate. Lunchtime, you know, we'll see how that goes. We can tighten things up. So there's some things that we wanted a little bit more teacher input in than we felt we had time to really do well. And just some pieces that I thought were worth trying because they were successful at the high school. The other thing too, we talked about the consequences, sort of upping the ante a little bit. So now for the infraction, you know, if we have sort of a, after school detention option, where if a student has their phone out and they know and they've been told, nope, the expectation, you've already been warned, you've already been told it's supposed to be in the pocket, you know, you're going to have to stay after school today. You can take the late bus home. And the parent has to come and get the phone. So that way too, it gives us an opportunity to involve the parents, to have that communication, to have, you know, the talk like, you know, little Joey or Suzie or whichever student is having a hard time with their phone, you know, and following the expectation. And then so what I'd like to do is have a little bit more time, continue the data collection, get some of the logistics worked out to make sure we can use the lockers if we decide to do that nine twelve. I think it would definitely work at the high school level. I'm skeptical to take it away from the middle school students. But again, I think the data collection is key to check in, to see how things are going. And then come back maybe December and, and take a look and, and maybe I can have like a more realistic or practical suggestion for like the language, like what we would really want to change it to. So I'm hoping that that sounds feasible or reasonable based on sort of things that came to light this summer that we didn't know in June. And I also need to work with Gordon to look into pickup patrol at the high school. So the other thing is, is I didn't budget for that. And we want to be responsible. We want to be mindful of, you know, what we're doing and what we're using and our spending. So I really think it's important if I, if we're going to do that at the high school, that we go through the process and I add it to the budget and work with Matt for next year. So.
Principal Mitchison, I think there was one piece that we had discussed is if a student has an infraction with their cell phone and they're kept after school, they can't get the phone back until the parent picks it up. They could take the late bus or leave with the parent, but they will not be able to participate in extracurricular activities that day.
Yep.
So that means you miss a game. Means you miss.
Practice.
Practice. It, it, we need to give this some teeth to have it work. We need the staff to feel supported that there's a real consequence for this because I, I am very concerned about the impact of cell phones and electronic devices on student learning and, and, and students' mental health. And so we are moving, this, we'll be working together for the next few months to keep an eye on the data and, and the staff behavior. So if you are willing to give us a little more time to work on this, our feeling would be that we would report back out in December, but we may come back to you sooner if we feel like we're not getting.
Yep.
I'm not, I'm not, it's not a limited to December situation. Just wanted you to know that we, it's something that we're taking on head on.
And I do know, just from being on my principal group, you know, we're doing a lot more than a lot of other schools. A lot of schools don't have a policy, right? And they, they don't have, so they then don't have any ability to really say, no, like this is not happening. Like we're not, this is not our focus. Our focus is education and learning. So I do think we're already ahead of the curve and I think we saw a lot of improvement last year. I think we can do better. So that's the hope. And then I, I think we can open up conversations to if we need to go the route of an extreme, like looking at a yonder pouch option. A lot of school districts are just going right to that. Again, with some policy implementation. So I don't think anything's off the table. I just think I didn't want to be too hasty in doing something that then had other repercussions or other, that had like a waterfall effect of then impacting a few other pieces before kind of making sure we have that squared away. So.
I just have two brief questions. So I'll ask them both and you can answer them both. So first question is, can you just be clear as to what the policy would be for the entire middle school? Day one of school. That way there's, there's standardization and everybody knows what the expectation is because clear expectations can, you know, get rid of problems right off the bat, right?
Sure.
And then secondly, that's a great idea, the repercussion as far as not, not being involved in extracurriculars. So the next question is, that does have teeth, which is then uncomfortable for teachers and administrators to actually carry that out. So is that going to be something that is going to be in word or in, in duty? Because the kids talk and it'll take half a second for kids to figure out that, oh, they're actually not going to follow through because they need me on the field, on the court, on the whatever.
No, I, I'm willing to, you know, I'll answer that question first. I mean, having been a coach years ago in school myself and dealing with kids. What do you mean so and so is not going to be here for X days? You know, it, it is what it is. And really it's a learning moment for kids and I always, and I'm not alone here. I might have stole this, but you know, you, you talk to your kids, you say, do you want to learn this the easy way or the hard way? So, you know, really it, it might be a hard day and a hard week for a kid to have to do that. But I bet they probably won't take their phone out again in any of their classes when they're not supposed to have it. And then to answer your first question, so the, we have these, I wish I had a picture, but they're, they hang on the wall. I think there's actually one or the library. Yes, it's, and they're numbered. So I ordered one for every single classroom. The high school already has, has one in every classroom. And so now the middle school will have one. And the teachers know, we talked about it at our staff meeting yesterday, that the expectation is when kids are in your class during the academic time, those phones go in that pouch and they are not to touch them until that time is over and they move to the next course. And I think I saw a lot of very relieved shared staff too. So now it's like the same for everyone. Before there was a little more discretion at the middle school. Like I said, teachers, okay, you just keep it in your backpack. Of course, the kid's always sneaking. So I think this is really going to help them to keep the consistency. The kids will, you know, figure it out in first couple of weeks. Usually that's when it's most important.
Great. Thank you, Jen.
I just had a little feedback. As we know, I have a son in the high school. The biggest complaint that I've heard from some of the youth, the panky thing, the shoe thing, go on the door and the door is left open and people can walk by and grab. So if the doors can be shut or if the, they can be hung up somewhere in the classroom.
Sure. Yeah.
That has happened.
And I think most of them are on, a lot of them are permanently screwed into the wall because the staff can actually like have a little autonomy to put them, but most aren't, they shouldn't be on the back of a door. So I can make sure that nobody has a phone on the back of a door. So.
I just want to thank you for recognizing that we just weren't ready for the step and that there were issues. And even though we had hoped to implement this in the fall, that we just weren't ready for it. So I thank you for saying, hey, this just isn't feasible and coming to us and saying, hey, we're not going to do it. I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just follow up to Jeremiah's question for the expectation to day one. So I'm just thinking, you know, fifth graders coming in and sixth graders. Have, have you or has anybody communicated that besides here, like that's the expectation that your cell phone is collected?
So the good news is we get to have sixth grade all by themselves on the first day. So I think going over that expectation, there's a time in the morning where they'll come in and they'll just hear that expectation. And they'll understand. And then the teachers are going to take the time in the classroom that day. We have a wonky schedule. So there's some fun things the kids get to do. They get to kind of run through their schedule in a many way. And actually, I haven't sent it out. I'm working on it. I'm going to invite parents to come in, any parent of a sixth grader. So if you're watching, parents of sixth graders, Tuesday morning, when you bring your kid to school, come on in with them to the auditorium. Because they, we didn't do an open house in the spring. There were several factors for that. Mostly, you know, we hired a, a new sixth grade group and they're fantastic. So they're super excited. So we're going to have that opportunity. So parents will hear the message too, on that first day that this is a middle school expectation, any kids who do have phones, that that's going to go in the pockets.
So I, I apologize. I should, I probably should have been more specific. And that, and that sounds great. But for the parents that can't make it.
Yep.
Right? I think, because I, you know, my son's fifth, one of the fifth grade, sixth grade. And I've spoken with other parents and there's this fear of, you know, school change.
Sure.
I think the last thing we want is for some Tommy Sue, whoever to come home and say, oh, the teacher took my phone.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep. No, I can communicate it. Make sure too, it's, I'm going to be sending some more information out. I mean, it's hard, right? I, I don't know how many of you got my two, could have been five page back to school letter, right? So I try to just do, okay, here's, I know what everyone's going to be asking, but certainly like, hey, let's also let's have a great first day tomorrow. And I can definitely make sure everybody knows and I'm happy to, to talk to anyone.
And your, your, your updates have been great, Jen, so I don't.
Not sick of them. Thanks.
I was going to say that the, the high school has done a tremendous job. By personal experience, they communicate, there's plans, there's good follow through, there is teeth to things. So I do see this moving even in a positive direction. And I agree with more. Just let's make sure we have some more data and we're happy that we're going to put it on, not on hold. We're going to do what we're doing, but before we make any drastic changes. But I do know that the high school from my perspective is just.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. I appreciate how much thought you've put into all of this. It's really been great that you've taken a lot of feedback on this. And I love that it really has teeth now.
Yeah.
That's the biggest, right? And I think that by giving this teeth, it will trickle down to rules and making it easier to enforce other, you know, other infractions. So hopefully this will really help kind of jumpstart a little bit.
Yeah.
On a bigger scale.
That's what we're hoping. So.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everyone posted as we progress. Everyone posted as we progress.
Right. Okay, 7.3 acceptance of Costco $500 donation.
Yep. So a couple of weeks ago, um, we received, um, an email from an assistant manager at Costco. And because we're part of their backpack donation program, they have a new program where, where they're, um, offering schools like Sanborn. Costco shop cards, which is a $500 card, uh, like essentially gift card That we can use for purchasing school supplies like paper pencils, markers and snacks for kids. So, um, the money will go to kids and It's a great thing. We didn't solicit it. Just was offered to us and we'd love it if you guys would accept it.
Motion to accept the 500, $500 donation from Costco and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Other than a huge thank you?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. All right. Uh, approval of amended 2425.
We're gonna table that.
Oh.
Sorry, I, I, I meant to, yeah, it, it looked like.
I, I, I did. I saw T and I thought Tom.
That's okay. No, we, we, uh, we're still doing some research on this and we will get back to you. Christine noticed that some of the districts in the cohort And the Seacoast School of Technology, um, do have that holiday and some don't. So we're going to just kind of check in with
Okay, fine.
We're just being very careful about that law, about the number of days that need to be congruent.
Absolutely.
Yep. I think we're fine.
Thank you. Okay, um, second public comment.
I just wanted to address, I was very concerned about the phone policy. I know you have to control it and force it. I love the idea Of detention, not participating in sports and having consequences to your actions. I do not love the idea of taking away the phones. I feel my daughter should be responsible for her phone and her Apple Watch. And I do like the fact that if she does not act appropriately with it, that you will call me and I will come get it and she will have to face me. So I think as parents who want all this, parents should be involved and we should, we pay for it. We Should control it. Um, the other thing I want you to consider too. And this is where there's a slippery slope as well, is children who do like dual enrollment and they're doing their ELO. They can't do their college work on the high school computers. And some teachers realize that my daughter brings her laptop in. And some teachers say you can't have your laptop. Some say you can Knowing what she's doing and looking at the work. So that is something that does need to be addressed. Because there's different criteria for the college material that's being done in school.
Could you send my, an email to me and Principal Mitchison about that so that I just remember to talk to you about it and follow up?
Okay.
I want, I want you to, a chain of command. I'd like to start with Principal Mitchison.
No, absolutely. I mean, it's been fine for my child, but you also don't want it to be. Why is it okay that your child does that? Because they're participating. So we should address a policy on that.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mike DeBattato Kingston. I was made aware of the J-BAB policy, just I think yesterday or the day before. So, um, You know, I wanted to come out here and just see what this is all about. I have a three-year-old who's gonna be going through the school system in a few years. I appreciate that you brought this, uh, up because you didn't agree with it. And it is important that everybody comes out here and voices their opinion. Seems like everybody, you know, listened to the opinions of the community. So I appreciate that and, uh, just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm pleased with the new electronic devices policy. This is Pam Brown Kingston. A small suggestion under part one, rules for student use, section B. If this rule is violated, the device, you should add S, devices, because you never know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kristen Stroger in Kingston. I'm sorry if I'm repeating anything. I was trying to talk to Jen. Phone policy, I just have a couple of questions regarding that. Given what we all went through four years ago with COVID and everything being sanitized and germs and all of that and just watching the news and seeing things on TV That there's a new variant coming and all of that. Are we gonna give the kids Clorox wipes to wipe their phone that's going into a pocket that seven other kids have used through the day? Because there have been studies done that cell phones are one of the dirtiest things you touch all day long. I mean, if you think, I'm hoping that the high schoolers aren't sneezing and then doing this and touching, but a sixth grader may be Touching their face, their mouth, their nose, touching that, then that's going into a pocket That somebody else has used, somebody else is gonna use after. So it may seem like a small thing, but for a kid that's immunocompromised or a germaphobe, it's a big issue. Second question is, um, for kids that have IEPs and are allowed Music or access to their phone during, after academic time in their 50-minute period. And they have that phone to help them decompress or stay dialed in, how's that gonna work?
We'll, we'll handle that on a case by case basis. So I'd reach out to Dr. Cannon.
Okay. I just want to know that.
I will say that they do handle that, like on a case by case basis. I have seen, you know, I know of kids that As soon as they're done their academic work, they can get their phone for their.
And, and I think that, that it, it, I, I'll just, we don't normally discuss during public comment. I'm happy to talk with you if you'd like to give me a call. So if you'd like to give me a call, I'd be happy to talk.
Well, I'm just saying, I have a kid that has that issue and, you know, if he's I'm just thinking more from the perspective of the other kids in the class. If they see a kid that's allowed to get up and go get that, how that's gonna That trickle down effect from that is just something to be considered and how you, how it gets dealt with.
Those are very valid points that I would be happy to discuss with you. Thank you.
Sanitation issue is real.
Oh, no. Yeah, the sanitation.
A good point.
Yeah, it's a really good point. I was getting skeezed out myself with the.
And, and look, like.
That's gross. Yeah, no, Kristen, I, I, I'm sorry. I didn't address that.
Yeah.
Jen's right there and Jen will, you know, Dan, do we have a bunch of wipes still? Dan said we've got a million wipes, so we'll make those available.
I mean, if I can make a comment too, though, about the policy and why I appreciate that Jen didn't move forward with Kind of what in June she was hoping to do. I, and we talk about like the comment about devices and laptops. I feel like that was part of in June, some of the pieces that Jen needed to figure out. So I think they're all valid points, but they're all I'm gonna guess that that part of these things played a role in her saying, we can't just go
Cold turkey.
Yeah, we can't go cold turkey. So I, I think these are all things that Jen has been taking into consideration.
Yeah, the, the mobile device problem is real. I mean, you know, as parents, uh, you know, both my sons have mobile devices and I fight for their attention. So imagine teaching 20 students that have access to phones. So one phone, one student disrupts the whole learning process. So that's why we're trying to take it seriously.
They've struggled to pay attention.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
What are those, what are those phone holders made out of? Plastic?
Uh, is it vinyl?
Yeah, it's like a vinyl.
Vinyl.
I've seen various types.
It's like a hotbed of bacteria in there. Is it like a, like a felt?
It's not felt, no. It's some kind of vinyl usually.
Shoe holder kinda thing.
Kristen's point about the, the wipes is a good point.
Yeah, we, we.
Make them available.
Make them available. That's great. I love like as a general practice.
Perfect example of the public giving input.
Absolutely.
So we appreciate that. Thank you, Kristen. We'll get the wipes. Gotcha. Yep, yep.
All right. Oh, Dan's bringing one out.
Dan's bringing one out. Hold on, we got it. We got Exhibit A is coming. Exhibit D.
Don't touch it. Hasn't been saying that.
Ooh.
There it is.
And they are, uh, fabric.
Oh, they are fabric. Okay.
Are those antimicrobial?
They have wipes of it.
Rick, get your phone in there. Get your phone in.
Yeah.
Oh, it's like that, it's recyclable bag stuff.
Basically recycled plastic.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. Okay. All right. So on to old business, uh, Ventrack tractor resolution.
All right. So this will be quick.
Or not. I don't know.
Facilities and finance. It's actually a resolution. It's not a solution. It's a, it's literally a resolution. So in May, you guys all You approved the purchase of a new Ventrack Kubota tractor, which we desperately need. And through a lease agreement and going through the leasing process this summer, we learned from, um, our attorney, because, uh, Because we're a tax exempt entity, we had to run it by our attorney, that you all have the board as to approve a resolution in a lease agreement. That, um, Allows the district to enter into the lease and authorizes either the superintendent, Dr. Ambrose or myself as a business administrator to sign on behalf of the district. And then our clerk will notarize it. So that's all I need you to do is to, um, Approve that, that, that resolution.
So are we still able to get it?
Yes. And literally tomorrow.
Like lose the summer.
No, no, we haven't, the price hasn't changed. The, nothing's changed. It's all getting submitted tomorrow and hopefully the tractor is here shortly because it's in Derry, Derry, New Hampshire right now.
I said it was our stall tactic.
We're gonna give that one for $4 million.
Oh, we gotta sign for it?
So, uh.
Okay. How do, how do we?
I was gonna say.
Take a motion.
To do what exactly?
Approve, um,
The lease of the Ventrack?
Yeah, the lease of the Ventrack and, and to authorize either Dr. Ambrose or myself to sign on behalf of the district.
Do you have, do you have the wording up the resolution?
I do.
Okay, read, read that into the record.
Why you read it?
Do you want me to read it into the record?
On council, but he like checked me. He's like.
Do I have to read this now?
Really angry if we do this.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay.
All right. Do you want Micah to read it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have Micah read it.
Why, thank you.
You're welcome.
I was hoping. I'd like to hear Micah.
Oh, yeah.
With your deep voice, Micah.
What's fear ye, hear ye.
I'm doing the whole thing.
With your deep voice, please. Make it raspy too.
One in the course of human events.
I just want to make sure you've got. Thanks, Jim.
Here is, okay, I'm reading section one of the resolution declaration of official intent for the Ventrack machines. Section one, any one of the authorized representatives identified below, Parenthetically, each and authorized representative acting on behalf, behalf of the lessee is hereby authorized to negotiate, enter into, execute and deliver One or more property leases. And substantially the form set forth in the document presently before the legislative body, which document is available for public inspection At the office of the lessee. Each authorized representative acting on behalf of the lessee is hereby authorized to negotiate, enter into exec, uh, execute And deliver such other documents relating to the property leases, parenthetically, including but not limited to escrow agreements. As the authorized representative deems necessary and appropriate. All other related contracts and agreements necessary and incidental to the property leases are hereby authorized. I feel like this is kind of like a hazing. Like I didn't have to actually do that, but you did it. They didn't do it.
You gave it professional.
Yeah. Anyway, I, I would like, I'd make a motion to, uh, now that, having read that.
Adopt the resolution.
To adopt, uh, make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
And to.
And to authorize.
Matt.
Matt or any other person. Yeah, Matt Malilla to, uh, sign the lease for the equipment.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor? Unanimous.
I think we have to sign it.
He has to sign.
He has to sign it. You guys will sign these. These are the DOE 25, AMS 25. Okay, so. Next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, September 4th, 2024 at 6:00 PM in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. Uh, and the Sanborn Regional Budget Committee meeting will convene on Thursday, September 5th In the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. Uh, do we need a non-public tonight? Apparently we need non-public.
A motion to move us into non-public RSA 91 dash A, six, four, and three, Roman numeral two, B, C, K.
All right. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, roll call in Rick.
Yes.
Jeremiah.
Yes.
Maura.
Yes.
Micah.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right.
Take a five, five minute.
We'll take a five minute break.